Here to the town council meeting both here that assembled here and also the ones who be viewing this over Facebook Live. We'll begin the meeting to by placing allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice.
What I wanted to do before we get into the business part of our meeting. Sometimes we get out of focus of why we're here, what we're doing, what the purpose of the town council is, and one thing that's never been read. Before the public is what our mission statement was is when we started. And this is our mission statement, the mission of the Westport Town Council is to safeguard public health. Safety and the welfare of all Westport residents. The Westport Town Council also commits to preserving property value and quality of life in the town of Westport. Promoting a preferred place to reside and conduct business. And so what I wanted to do is draw focus back to the things that the town council does is based off of this mission statement. So the health, safety and welfare of citizens and preserve property value. And quality of life and when we started off with this, this was quality of life. So has everyone been able to read the minutes on the October 11th council meeting? And council or the meetings from the November the first 2020 council meetings?
Hi.
Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Nope.
There being none, I have a motion on the floor, accept.
Make a motion.
Second on favor. Approval of the funeral deeds, favorable vouchers, adjustments, monthly bills and that will be signed after the. At the end of the town council meeting. So this is going to be divided up tonight into two public hearings and I'll open up the first public hearing for additional appropriations.
Harry, we are asking for additional appropriations under two different funds. Under the cemetery fund, we're asking for an additional 5,000. That will go towards the salaries that was required to do the mowing and trimming, things like that at the cemetery this year. We hired someone part-time, but we got a late start and so we were paying our guys for a little while, which cut into our. What we thought would have been our budget for this year. So I'm asking for additional funding there and then under the general fund, we had several police car repairs. I'm asking for 8,000 additional monies for the budget for the police repairs. We hired a new attorney and we've had several attorney costs this year, so I'm asking for an additional 5,000 for attorney costs. And that gives me or gives the budget a total of additional funds of 13,000 in the regular general fund. So I'm just asking permission to do that.
Well, what this is, it's switching. Funds within the budget or the categories, different categories for different monies over there and switching within that.
Well, it's asking for additional because we.
Oh, why is it a state?
Yeah, we asked, we set it up as a certain budget, but we went over that. So we're asking the state for additional permission to spend out of those.
Transfer from a different account.
Yeah, yeah, we have the money there. It just was beyond what we thought we would need for that line item basically. Public comment.
How much more money do you need?
We're asking, we're asking the state.
The town needs not her.
I want to say that's what she said.
No, this isn't.
She's talking for the town, she is the clerk of this town. She is the clerk. On this board. Okay.
No, there's your separate expenditures when you lay out a budget. I'm sure your own personal budget that you say I'm going to spend X amount of dollars for each line item. So when you do that is if you go over budget, you gotta move money from someplace else into that to pay for that and that's what she's asking approval to do.
Oh, we got a new lawyer. Said part of the expenditure was 5,000 for a new lawyer. For the additional cost for the lawyer, correct?
Um, Harry, are you gonna set a timer on public comments and ask for public comment or?
Yeah, we'll say, we'll say there were time then the five minutes for a public hearing.
At the end of the meeting.
Then we got open and close it now.
No, this is, we'll have to, I have public hearing, close that back off and then go to the next one. Is there any, any other questions?
I make the motion that this board will accept the changes that we have to do to make sure everybody is.
One second. I will close the meeting of the care and traditional appropriations and we'll open the main public hearing for PD purchase grant.
And Harry, this is where the USDA requires us to have a public hearing when we request financial assistance from their program. They told us that they could cover 30% of a purchase for a police car, so we're going to apply for that 30%. Shane's budget around 50,000, we're thinking for cost of a new police car and the 30% would definitely help towards those costs. So the first step in applying through the USDA grant program is to have the public hearing and allow public comment. This is also a time where we can accept public bids if anybody wants to submit a bid. On providing the town with a police car and the supplies that go with it.
All right. Is there anybody here to comment on that? Is there anyone here to? Or bid on purchase of a new police car?
I don't think anybody knew about it yet. It was just the first year.
It was a question, yeah.
All righty, no comments, questions? Motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Second.
On favor. Okay, I will close the public hearing for police department purchase grant. Next thing I'll open up Rachel Westport Water Project.
Update memo. Finally, making some progress on all accounts. They did startup last week, I think they did a little bit of training, got off to a rocky start, but that's kind of how. The ones when you start up new equipment, that's kind of how it seems to go. So they are doing the performance testing this week, which means they're running it with water. Making sure all the bugs are worked out and all the gears turn and the motor to run and all those things. Still quite a few people on site, chaos kind of out there at the water plant. After this week or maybe mid this week, we'll, we'll have a better comfort level for if we're ready to do the shutdown and transition. I think in all coordination with Damon a little bit later this week and see how things are going and if we're ready to do that. Then they'll start decommissioning the old plants and really speak some progress. Do you have one pay request from Pinaman? It's got emailed out, so here's that. Aircraft number 12, 115,000, $9.85. The retainage of $6.53. That puts them at 95% complete, so we are getting really, really busy. Through that and then I'll.
I make the motion that we go ahead and pay Pinaman and it's 95% paid off for them.
Second, second on favor.
During Division B, the primary thing they have left to do, Omera is, is finish the loop up there. We were able to issue notice to proceed on that on Friday, so they should be out there. Think later this week, we're still in coordination with them every day, they're working to get hydrant, they still need to get. Stuff like that's just really hard to get right now, but they have most of the pipes, so once they start going, they should, they should be able to rock through that really quick. I anticipate a change order for them next month, but nothing for them this month. Thank you Alex for pushing those eight months by there, that was. Finally, finally gonna get all that stuff done. On the wastewater, I think that was the next on, on the list. We had a meeting on November 1st with the board, I think everything to update regulatory, that type of thing. I'm a ready report with that, I think the board's aware of all the deadlines. I have the two contracts that we discussed, these are both the wastewater ones, right? I have three copies of each, one for you guys, we'll take one back, submit it to the funding agencies and then one for your turn. This is what we discussed, Alex has reviewed these. And then the only other thing I have is next month, I think we mentioned, I mentioned this last month. The way your wastewater plant operates now, you have to do an annual stream calibration in order to discharge. So we have a contract to do that, it's that Alex to review right now, so we'll all just bring it back next month. Mark asked us to put it together, so it's a, we've done it in the past a couple of years, so. Once the new improvements are completed here in a couple of years, that requirement should go away. That's really all I have to update, there's some pictures in this little memo in the back, just some of the startup and testing, like I said, it's still looks kind of messy out there. But that's kind of how startups go sometimes. You can see the water going to the tank, it's kind of green, but I promise that won't, won't be that way once it's treated. That is all I have. Yeah, I, I don't know if you want to motion to approve that or if you guys have any questions, Devin.
That's what we went over at the last meeting.
That's, yeah, that's what we talked about on the first.
Make a motion.
Second on, on favor. Rachel, we touched on this today, if they don't get that. Gas line and out there. The backup plan is we delay the start of the process and water out through there or we put heaters.
Yeah, the gas, the gas line really is just to heat the building. None of the, the plant treatment processes require natural gas and it's all, they're all electric. So we have electric out there, obviously there's water and you know all that, so. It's really just to heat the building and now that it's getting colder and colder, that starts to become a concern. I haven't heard any update on, on that gas.
They said they were trying to put it forward, but obviously not everybody else. I don't know at what point it, it called in earlier, I don't know what the delay was.
And you know, we've been talking about that at our meeting for a couple of months now. Yeah. A lot of times you can't call that stuff in until you're actually ready for them and then you.
When I was half, I was half there today and there was only this couple of vehicles out there.
Do you know there's some natural gas wells on that road?
Yeah.
So.
This is such a point where we're, we're getting, they feed the existing building, right? So it's just running a new tap off.
Oh, okay.
A line that's already out there, right? I don't know if that means they have to do a new device regulator, all that stuff, I assume. Typically, I mean, it's November before it really becomes a concern freezing, I would hopefully get it in.
I just wonder if this contingency plan, if we don't, I would say we don't get it in.
Well, I assume worst case scenario, we can get some electric heaters out there to hold by, but.
Does anybody have any questions yet?
From a Commonwealth standpoint, kind of just to prove our contract, but we also asked for notice to proceed up to proof bidding, up to bidding. We can get going on our design and this, we got some really critical milestones to meet, so I know you approved our overall contract, but.
I thought we did that at the last meeting.
Did you?
There was no votes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I make the motion that we go ahead and give you permission to go into that.
Say.
On favor.
We'll start with stuff to talk about before this meeting, defense and layout, so that we can get Alex going on that.
Okay.
Attack that before, before it becomes an issue. Thank you. All the. Hang on, grab.
This is the way you sign this is true.
Damon, is Amara gonna come back and finish your yard?
Yeah, yeah, they're still not. They're still not done.
Okay, next on it's wastewater project. We get both together. Okay, the next on our list is ordinance 20.
I would like to interrupt just for a second before we get into that, because it's going to take a while. I want to introduce everybody to Mr. Mike Garlic, is opening a new business at the end of Rain Street. You probably remember him from Garlic Ford out of. North Burnet. Welcome. New mountain and then we hope to good things for you.
Yeah, I live in the Berry Creek area. I've lived, actually this will be my second time getting closer to Westport, but I've, I've been over there for about four years. And then I was put in one of the ham right houses for a while before. And so I've lived in the community, I know there's several people here, but I am, I'm planning to be able to help the community. I'm going to put in a, a pretty nice lot that's going to have a variety, but it's definitely going to be for everybody, not just. One section of people, so. And I'm, I've looked up at some of the businesses in town that I'm going to use, or to get them in, it's a mechanic here in town, I'm pushing it about a couple hundred cars a year.
He's awesome.
To work on and look at.
And, and I also want to introduce you to three of the people that, that is on the Business Association Board. And I'm sure that they would love to have you as a member also. This is Brian Gatewood in the back. And over on this side is Barb Winchester and, and Connie Davis. And so you guys will talk to him about getting in the Business Association. Yeah, we want to keep you here.
All right.
Okay, now we get.
Okay, what we'll do is say. And we'll go next, we'll go to the NDOT compliance. Well, all we had to do was the town of Westport is all towns across Indiana, we've had to come up with an ADA compliance. And the last go around that we get matching, matching funds, 75.5 from the NDOT to pave our roads. They sent us a letter this time saying that's not going to happen anymore because you don't have an ADA compliance plan. So and Gloria did the most work, I did very little work, I went around took pictures of all the. Sidewalks and major doors and looked at different things. And that was my contribution, we got on the internet and looked at other small towns and. Cities, you get into the cities and then you get a book about that there. So ours is this there. So we're hoping, we're going to take it to NDOT and see if they do approve it, then once they approve it, then we can get back and. Start planning for road paving, but Gloria did the most work on it is by, and I got a. People to do good work, needs to be recognized and Gloria did all the work. That and tonight we're going to hopefully adopt this. And once we adopt it, like I said, it will be turned into NDOT and we get approval by NDOT and we're, we're ready to go. Is this something? That's going to be done overnight to comply with NDOT, not hardly. Because if we did that, that means we'd be redoing Main Street and all the other things, putting in brand new sidewalks, curving. And all of that, we are going to have to, as a matter of fact. Do you want to come in, sit down? Matter of fact, the doorway he's standing on is not ADA compliant, it's not wide enough. So that's. All right, but well, there's three doors we're going to get on, on the outside where Damon said, and there's a lift. Concrete lift, it's going to have to be repaired. Uh, I don't know if you caught this in the news, and I was just here again recently. Was, and I can't think of what city this was, somebody with a wheelchair and a lawyer was going around. Finding things that weren't ADA compliant and following lawsuits, I mean, was it, I, I just read that here within the last week, so. So this is, this will be a work in progress, I'm not going to read the whole thing. If anybody wants to see it, of course, and come in town hall and be able to read it.
A lot of that has to do with too, you know, it was hand in hand with all these businesses that's been here for years. When you redo one of those businesses, you have to ADA comply. You have to have bathrooms for people with handicaps, you have to have the doors for handicaps. Or the wheelchairs and everything get in, if you, if you don't comply with what they ask. Then you're out your own money to build a $5 million water plant or to. Take care of our stormwater, you know, it's just something that the whole town is going to have to look at and, and try to produce what they want us to do.
Just see if you can read that.
Do I need to read this, why do I want?
You don't need to read the entire resolution, I think you give an understanding of what it is and that you guys can post it online or. No, it's not going to be read in entirety, what's the name, what's the number of that?
Big bird.
And the number of the resolution?
2021, six.
21, 2021, guy six.
I make the motion that we start to comply with, with the state on this, just something needs to be done.
On favor.
Aye.
Thing is, you know. All kinds of people are following things, the rules and the regulations on clean air, clean water. ADA and everything, it's going to get tighter and tighter and tighter. I was at a meeting here last week with some of the other mayors of Will Greensboro, Columbus. No, not, yeah, Columbus, Jennings County, Jennings, North Burnet, rather, and Scottsburg and all that, and they told us at that meeting. That the item is going to start finding people, they just tired playing around, they don't want to start finding, that's, that's wasted. So we were all sitting there and made and kind of, and fines can get, well, if you want it, it could be $500 per day. And this time I didn't say we're not joking, so these are things we've got to deal with. Okay, P and D going, we'll go ahead and.
Waiting till, I think he's holding over till last, because it'll have the most conversation.
I'm Jane Gault and this is Kenny Marshall and we're on the Westport area for you building town council. Council. I'll get right here in a second. The first page is the same thing we presented to you in April. It just gives you a little bit of a history about the building, how it began. We are a 501(c)(3) C, not for profit. That's a good thing and a bad thing, but currently we are running low on money and the building is. 30 plus years old. Right now our windows on the X, or all of our windows and siding. Needs replaced, Kenny can talk more about that in just a little bit. On the front page also is the people that are on the board, Chad Carter is our president. Any of the people listed there would be happy to talk to you at any time to help you understand. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask us. We were here in the spring hoping to. Put our plea in for the community building and how important it is to this community and we would really like to. Have the town support us. With some money so that we can get this building back up to shape and keep it from deteriorating, which is the point of that now. Kenny, share some of the things.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we kind of concentrated on what the. Priority items are, which we feel like mostly is exterior. But the, while the vinyl siding, especially on the south side of the building, is cracking, it holes in it. And we're really concerned that it's going to start getting water in there. So what we feel is best treatment is probably to remove all vinyl siding and the rock. There's some question whether water is getting down behind the rock or not and replace on that with metal siding. So that was kind of our number one priority. Other ones were replacing eight windows, which are 35 years old or so. Replacing three doors to, replacing them with ADA compliant doors. One double door, one single door, I don't know if you've ever noticed when you're in there, there. We've kind of been trying to keep up, I mean, the locks fail on them, we have to replace the locks and they're really not ADA compliant at all. And on the exterior also looking at new gutters and downspouts. And the interior of the building. Major concern right in there now is the ceiling, the sagging in the kitchen. Drywall separating, the seams are separating, it's beginning to sag there in the hallway. We need a couple of new appliances, two refrigerators in one range, which we can handle that probably on our own, but the rest of the big items. We tend to do that. So we're in the process of getting some bids and. We don't really know, but the queen is, you know, looking at the items that need to be fixed, we may be looking at 50 to $75,000. We're just now starting to get some bids in and. If anybody knows of any very competent contractors, please let us know, because just the four or five, six of us, you know, don't have a real broad knowledge of. Contractors and you may be.
We have a wonderful new one in town that. It's, he's actually went to school to be an engineer, you know Tyler Bushorn?
We've contacted Tyler, he's cleaning up, he was hoping to have it forced by tonight.
Oh, okay.
He's putting a bid in for the windows.
I'm impressed with this young man, he's, he doesn't work for me and it was like, oh my goodness.
He put a bid in for the wind, or he's planning to put a bid in for the windows and the doors. And then I talked to him about the, we were removing the rock and the metal siding. And then he kind of wants to just take the ones first and look at the window. And then.
That's one.
He's approached some metal.
Yeah, I've got a couple of people have requested bids, we actually got one back, but. We'd like to probably have three or four bids at least and then, you know, some of it would have to be pieced out, you know, like the drywall work, of course, probably would be some in separate. So we may have two to four separate bids or, you know. Two to four separate bids or, you know, individual parts of it, so. Our plan is over the next month, two months, try to get enough bids in, come back in and then.
Well, appreciate you coming to see me. That's why as James, when we talked to you on the phone, if we kind of narrow down. You get a close, not a ballpark figure, what we were talking about, what your needs are and uh. Appreciate you coming this evening, not any questions.
I know we've already finalized our budget.
For next year.
I know, but when we're talking about ADA money.
Right, right, but I'm not sure where that's at.
We had talked about using some of the ADA money to help with that because that's that's something that this town has got to have. Uh, so I make the motion that we entertain the thought that we will help them with this. Of course, we don't know for sure how much it's going to be, but we'll, we'll do the best we can.
I definitely think we need to make the best, but I just don't know what we're capable of doing.
Right, right. We'll have to talk with Gloria to see what we can come up.
Pass a motion based on that, not getting a concrete figure, but how do we do that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's enough um, or a, a, an actual motion we made.
I'd say we would get, getting together and collectively figure out what it is that that we could offer. And then make a motion based on the amount that.
Tell me there would need to be a request for a specific amount and then an idea of where that amount should come from so that we can. Um, then pass a resolution that's um, written out. Um, appropriating the money and spending it for a certain dollar.
The ARP is going to want a lot of pre-planning and we will have to do a resolution for it. And it would be nice for you to get some of those bids back and have a good idea of how much you're looking at.
Thank you. We'll try to be here.
Yeah, we definitely want to help, but.
Right, just.
Going around.
We just want to keep you aware that we still are um. In need and we want to keep that building um, in good shape. Um, I might also ask if Connie, I'll put her on the spot. Connie does all the scheduling for the community building and the cleaning and uh, she shared with me. How many people um. Enjoy the building. And Connie, would you like to just share a little bit about?
Uh, no, like more scouts, they use the building, Girl Scouts, um, Business Association, Main Street. There's almost any group. Um, we have South Dakota has some of their banquet's there. So it's a lot of groups, Quanis is there. So there's a lot of groups that use that, that um. I think, I mean, obviously it is like for the next two. Well, the whole month of November and the whole month of December, it's booked every weekend. Um, with some sort of event in the front room or back room. So we just used a lot, but it is and it needs some repair. I mean, um, and I, everybody, I mean, it is, it's a great location. But yeah, it's just, it is at the point where it needs some upkeep and. But there is a lot of people that use it.
Some of it, like the ceiling in the kitchen could become a, actually a safety hazard. I don't know if I'm getting far enough looking at it.
In what way?
Falling.
The ceiling is sagging, so you know, a group could be in there in the kitchen and the ceiling naturally pull loose and come down. So you know, it's going to need our ADA attention and that's probably where. What, what money we do have, we're going to have to go in and take care of that because time is not going to, you know, help us out. But some of the other things, um, you know, the windows, we're starting to want to be bad. And, and also everybody needs to remember our libraries there and that library is important to this community. Probably unless you frequent the library, you don't realize how many people actually use it. And so that's really important and Connie spoke to all the community things and we didn't even talk about family get togethers and reunions and that sort of thing. And people like renting that building because it's affordable. You know, we have a wonderful venue out on a free, but you know, most people aren't going to rent that for a family get together and. Or have a meeting there unless they, you know, can afford that kind of thing. So I think it's really important that we keep this community building. In good condition and that people want to continue to use it. Because the, the people that built the building um, put a lot of time and effort into it. A lot of volunteers from this community and a couple of them still are around and they come to our meeting a few months ago and they were like. Please, please, please don't let this building get in that, you know, in a. Place where it can't be repaired, you know, they, they have a, a big heart for it, so.
No, and, and, and we don't plan to let it get to that point. There are just certain steps and procedures that we have to go through to. Arrive at that point, but we definitely do, we're committed to that point.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Last step on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty one dash eight rental inspection. I think probably most people are here for that. And how we will handle that. Who, anybody who wants to speak for or against it will give you.
Each.
Uh, we'll give you two minutes each, whether it be four or.
I just didn't know if it was, if you're trying to do that for everybody.
Yeah. So we will start out over here.
Yeah, I'm going to say is this, y'all manage this thing. I'm not going to let anybody trespass on my property. And, you know. I don't understand why the sheriff of Kader County is not a deputy sheriff to write ordinance in a county that he's going to have control and may enforce these laws. That is a conflict of interest on your part, sir.
It's not because I can't enforce the town ordinance as a deputy sheriff.
You guys are always in town, both people were speaking and everything else. I don't want to hear that.
That's a state ordinance. It's a state law.
I'm going to tell you it's like.
What? You're confusing things because you're, you're misinformed.
What, what we'll do is. I'll write down your concern and we'll let everybody say for or against and we'll come back at the end of it. And address the questions because if, if we don't, what again, we'll, we'll, we'll be going back and forth all the time. We want to respectfully listen to each person. And hear what they have to say. I, I know you are. I know you are and.
And I'm just letting you know you're missing from.
I'm telling you, you send somebody on my, my properties, I will sue you personally for it. I understand that. That is not a threat, that is a problem.
Lawyer for that, sir.
Jim.
I'll have the, every news and Congress.
Jim.
Sheriff's ass, want to know why you're writing.
Jim, what, what we'd like.
Again, you're misinformed on that, sir.
Jim, what we would like to do is, is keep and try to keep the focus and let you talk.
Let me go smoke a cigarette, you can do.
Alright, alright, go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
And um, I think that there's enough agencies that are ready, you know, there to. Do what you guys have been trying to do and I don't think it's necessary. And I think that if we want to get involved, we should be timely to those agencies to do their job and not putting home another later.
Would you reference those agencies, please?
Yeah, for instance, um. If uh, if there's a concern about um. About the uh. Electrical, safety, whatever, then you know, you've got the fire chief. Uh, if you've got um. Concerns about the welfare of children, you've got Child Protective Services. And those different agencies can get involved.
And which ones have you dealt with?
I've not had to deal with any of them because my properties are in good shape. But my daughter just got my, quite a few of them in her position.
Anything else?
I just think you're adding a need and it's very sensitive and you're. I don't necessarily trust whatever's opinion, you know, you guys might have when you come into it. You know, you might have different agenda than what is necessarily making a concern.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Oh, I've got a concern. I pay two percent on my property, on property taxes. All other people pay one and why are you discriminating against rentals and not? Everybody, why do you think you're going to go in and inspect a rental house and not inspect every house in Westwood?
Okay, any other concern?
No, not really. That seems to cover about all of it.
Everybody has different per- opinions, depends on what side of the fence you sit on. Okay, next.
Um, well, I, I agree with her on the agencies that are in place. Um, there's, you know, environment and environmental management. That you can go to if you've got, I know you were talking about. The place with the sewage issues and stuff running down the street and all of that. Um, and the Department of Health and if they're not doing their jobs, then that's an issue with those departments. I, I don't know um, what qualifications someone has that's going to be inspecting properties. Um, I, I know that. You know, most of the people that have rentals here do take care of their properties. Probably as well or better than some of the homeowners. And so if we're, you know, if, if that's the issue, then you need to deal. With them directly. And I know you're going to say, well, if we do one, we have to do everybody. Well, you need to get the agencies on the ball that have to do, that have the personnel to do those types of things.
And what agencies that you mentioned have you dealt with?
Well, that, I don't really think that's the issue. If you have an issue with those agencies, then. I know how hard it is to deal with any kind of government agency because you are on the phone for lengthy times and. But to just start charging people fees and doing things that, you know, like they, she said, there's a fire department here. Um, there's the Child Protective Services, there's a um. The Health Department. It's for the whole county. It's not just for Greensburg. So we should be using those, those agencies that are available.
Okay, next.
Ma'am, can you provide your name for the rest?
Yes, I'm sorry. You need to provide, tell us your name. Next.
Mark.
Okay, Connie, okay.
Uh, Toby Van Alis, Mike Hughes. Uh, our, uh, what we like to say is, for the good of the order at the end, it has nothing to do with. Your business here on your agenda. It's towards the end of the, we're, we're Westwood, Masonic.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I had a question about that old building. Okay. Okay, we're over here in Lost River Cave. Are you here?
My name's Kathy Marie Clay. I operate Pine Lake Global Home Park here in town.
Right.
I want to let you know that I'm already inspected on at least an annual basis by the State Board of Health. I'm also licensed by the State Board of Health. And they do come on site and they do inspections at least annually, sometimes more. I've read your ordinance. I am in agreement with what a lot of you folks are saying about other agencies being there to take care of it. I have personally worked with the State Board of Health and I address all concerns they have. Um, I also pay a licensure fee. Most of these things are provided. As a result of that, they have. I keep and maintain a listing of everybody who's there. I want to tell you that I personally am not going to have any rentals. On that, all I rent is space. I notice you included the space. A mobile home space is part of your definition. Um, I'm not sure what criteria would be for you to inspect a space. That was something that I wanted to get some clarification on as well.
Oh, about the definition?
Well, not the definition.
Love the lot.
Yeah, well, what, what, what can you possibly inspect on a lot? That's really all I have to say.
Okay, gentlemen, say it next to.
Did you have any questions? Yeah, I wanted to, someone pointed out the qualifications of the inspector. That's, that's really, uh, my opinion is it's important to have. Uh, well qualified people to do it. That's what we encounter with the State Board of Health as they come out and inspect. Uh, as Kathy said, either annually or whenever they want to within that year. So, uh, and they do not contact as prior to, they just come out and inspect and they're inspecting the space. And then a report is written, sent to us and then uh, we have to. Uh, define how we fix all of the issues, which is I think what your rental uh, inspection is going to. And one of the things the State Board of Health does is they codify all of that information. As to what they're going to inspect for. So then there's an addendum a lot of times to inspection agreements that says, here's what we're going to inspect for. Someone mentioned. The importance of knowing what you're going to inspect, what the standard is, so that you maintain that standard uniformly throughout. Throughout the community and in our case throughout a local park. So that's what, that's what we're looking for is. What are those standards for each of the inspections and what is acceptable? For, for the inspections. And still, as Kathy said, how do you inspect? A space of land. That's, that's what we'd like to know too. We do not rent. Uh, we've eliminated our last rental, so we do not rent mobile homes. Space to, you can put your mobile home all, you all. And that then becomes a clarification.
I see.
So you get, that's your home.
Right.
Those are, those are some issues that, that we have and we'd love to get your, you guys to address those and let us know when we have.
I, I think. This is just me speaking. We wanted to get the input and this is the most input. Not necessarily, we're going to pass the ordinance tonight, necessarily something. We take the input and go back and look at it and take the cares and concerns into it. Um, it's still what we're trying to address and it goes back to the initial statement. Safeguard public health, safety and welfare. And that's the thing we're committed to doing. Is this ordinance necessarily perfect? No, that's why we're here for public input. And um, we're going to take that into consideration and discuss it among ourselves and with our attorney and. And uh, go from there.
Boy, sir, I just think if you're probably opening a can of worms with this and I know you've got good intentions from it, but if they don't come up. End up coming back and finding us on the backside. But I think we should do things that more encourage homeownership than just discourage rental situations. And any fee you add like that, you're passing it on to a tenant and you have to know that. That's for charging a, a new tenant that be. And or be passed on that way. I just think it's a bad idea.
I agree.
Passing what? Passing the fees to the tenants?
Everybody here that's got rental, whatever fee you charge us, the renter will pay.
Well, that's a given, so we understood that.
So you don't care about, I thought the welfare of the people was.
Somewhere, somewhere along the line. And, and we'll discuss this among ourselves, but we, we, that was a thought. We already kind of figured that in a way. That's. Okay, okay, it's just like.
I mean, I can.
Yes. We, we can talk about that, but it's no, it's. Tonight, we're taking your input.
But I am asking you a question. You don't care that you're going to raise the rent on everywhere?
So you would raise the rent considerably on a renter for a twenty five dollar fee?
You'll never get anybody to do it for twenty five dollars.
That's what's in the ordinance.
No, we won't get that. People can't argue.
Wait.
It's what's in the ordinance.
What I want to do, excuse me, stop right there. You had your opportunity to speak. We need to let the other people speak, you know. Robert, are you done?
I think he's just saying that you won't find any inspector for the twenty five dollars, that fee won't be realistic. And you really can't have somebody locally probably doing it. You're probably have to have, definitely have somebody.
That's true.
You know, because they're going to be having, everybody's going to say Spikes got an interest in something one way or the other.
Right. Anything else? Richard.
Just hearing the same, hundred percent against it or?
Okay, I guess you're, you're alive.
Yeah.
Yeah, hi everybody, my name is Carl Griffith.
Wait a minute, Carl, we're, we're waiting to hear.
Is is this about the rental inspection part of it? Okay, okay.
Six oh six East Stock Street, everybody. Uh, evidently, I'm not part of a town in Westport, but uh. I'm remodeling my house and I'm going to rent it out eventually, and I'm not gonna let you inspect it. When you had him call on me and uh, give me red tag, I called the building inspector. I got it unread tag because I wasn't out of scope, didn't have to have a building permit, so. You guys all read up on the laws, I'm a property rights side, I didn't have to have one, unless I did certain things, so uh. And you called me trash. You said I wasn't part of Westport, and you harassed me.
I've never spoke to you.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to let you know, I have two minutes, remember that.
Let him speak, he's got two minutes.
He's got to go ahead, as long as it's, as long as it's about the rental, okay.
Now, it's completely unlawful for you to make this request because these people are these. Entities are in any place, like they said, and the only reason they're not doing anything about it is because there's not very many violations. I'm under no violations and you keep freaking out about me. You don't look like my house has changed. You guys want all these inspections, but you wanna hire Damon as superintendent.
That's not true.
On this record, guys. That's good, guys. You're you're doing a great job.
Okay.
You guys said I wasn't part of Westport.
I don't think I.
To be read here, under George's two minutes, I don't know if I can complete this whole thing, but I will only hear.
No, you're already over your two minutes already. It doesn't make any difference.
Better yet, anybody would like a copy of the letter, George has offered.
So you don't want me to read it? You guys wouldn't like to hear it?
Well, no, if you can read. The only thing we're discussing is rental ordinance. After we're done with that, when we open it up to the floor, yes, but not now. You have anything other on the rental ordinance?
I I don't believe it's right to do it. I believe you should create goodwill to your neighbors instead of calling. Part of them when they're not in violation and encouraging people to call CPS on me and stuff like that.
Oh.
That's the type of stuff you wanna do when you can't, I'm not in violation, so you wanna.
Carl, yes, the only thing.
You wanna make a rules to put people in violation?
I'm gonna, I have to close you off from discussion unless you stay on point. Of what we're talking about the rental agreement, that's what most of these people are here, that's what we're into this house. Now, this, what you're talking about is a separate issue.
You can separate it on one hand, but you put it together on the other.
No, we're getting wrong on it. Besides, I I want to tell you another thing. Out of out of courtesy, we let people speak, but do you realize we don't have to do that?
Why you don't have to? Public meetings, this is, you guys are elected.
No, you misunderstand what the law is. We don't have to. We can close it off for discussion, I do that, that's that's because we allow it to be done, to listen in front of people.
Well, how is it not?
He's a lawyer, you may ask him here.
Would you weigh in on this, please?
I can, um, I would say that this is a public comment period, um, and I would say that the. Current commenter has exceeded the two minutes.
Right.
Uh, if the board would like to, um, expand his time, the board can.
We've been doing mowing yards and everything, that is to do what? Simple, keep up your property values. To get people to be clean things up, because everybody has a lot invested in the property, and part of the mission was keep that up. Okay, and and, oh shoot, I lost my train of thought, anyway. But, oh, what I'm saying is, okay, and doing that, the more we clean up, the pretty soon people start telling on each other, taking pictures. Or in 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 saying, if you don't. Do something about that, we're gonna take you to court to make them clean up property. Okay, that's that's this, you you know, you try to pick out one person and do it, no, we can't do it, we gotta do it to everybody. Because, uh, uh, same way when we got out there on Dollar General store, that square in that area, we're working on to get that cleaned up. Okay, why do we do that? Because the homeowners come back and say, wait a minute, you're letting the businesses off the hook. So, and Pine Lake, we went down there too, and asked them, you know, clean up, not Pine Lake, but the. What rentals and fronts, and who had all that trash out there. Oh, motel, yeah. So, we we, and say people coming back and saying, well, you guys are sure being choosy on things. And you're picking out certain people to enforce it. No, we're not, we're going across the board to everybody. So, the same thing with this ordinance, yeah, there is some people that have good rental property. And I say, Mr. Gilwater, you're one of them. You have to clean the rentals, you rent good tenants. We got some other properties that are just a hundred and eighty degrees different, which is, so, okay, so how do you, how, okay.
You guys said you took these steps before, right?
Right.
And they resulted in nothing.
Right.
Well, you know, we have those laws and stuff of that nature, you keep doing those steps. And it's like a guy that's constantly speeding, you write him enough tickets, eventually he gets to the point. But why punish everybody else because of two or three bad?
If you were stopping the same person all the time and giving him tickets for speeding. Wouldn't he be able to come to you and say, you're just picking on me because? I know, honey, that's that's just a, for instance. What I'm saying is, if you don't have the same rules for everybody. We're not telling you that your place is bad, we're not telling any of you that. The only thing is, is you don't have it all in writing. And somebody does come in and does some nasty stuff, you guys are gonna be blamed just like everybody else. Don't do that, we don't do that, we don't wanna do that.
One of the things that I'd like everybody to understand, this isn't something that we just wanna come up and decide to do, okay? And unfortunately, the great number of people, a very large number of people that come to us repeatedly and ask for these things to happen. Aren't here in support of it.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
So it shouldn't be passed, right? Isn't it supposed to be a line put from people that live in the town that own property too?
Yeah, but you're not the only one that's given input. I mean, that, that's why we're.
Your input is not a property owner. Have you got my neighbor?
It it's the reason for the generation of the idea.
Yeah.
Because of the people coming and complaining, um, we've had Walter come in three or four times because of the condition of the house in front of you. Because he has to smell that. You you know?
Those people vacate, we don't turn the water back on until the problem's fixed, right?
But it doesn't mean that he can't just put somebody back in there. It doesn't mean he can't put somebody in there, though.
But they can't live in there with water, right? They can live in there with no water, right?
I don't know lately if we can do that, or if we refuse somebody. No, but it just allows us. The thing is, we we, here's, here's the thing.
Just one second. So, so the fee is really a bone of contention. So what's, what what's with the fee? It's a nominal fee to, for for the administration of paperwork.
Some people, it's gonna be more than just nominal, twenty-five dollars per rental, it's pretty expensive for some people, and that's ridiculous. Because who gives you the right to inspect my property or his property or theirs? That I can come and check yours. Or the same inspector should come inspect your house and make sure it's safe, and you should pay a twenty-five dollar fee for your property, dude.
Well, this is for the rentals, but.
No, we should, it's for everybody, you can't say it's just for rental. You can't do that, that's against the law.
Yeah, but if they were to get a loan on it, if if they were to get a loan on it, then it would be required for an inspector to come in. And for certain things to be done.
Building inspector told me I wasn't violating, so.
Anytime that I've received a law over, for a building. Yeah, anything that I've ever experienced.
I think the folks on the end had a question, did you have a question?
I had a question about water, I mean, if if the renter is paying for the water.
Right.
And the renter says, I'm no longer gonna pay for the water, that's it off. And then damage is positive as a result of that. Is the landlord at fault?
Damage too.
No, the the renter paying for the water, he cuts off all the water. He said, I'm no longer gonna have water.
And the pipes freeze.
Pipes freeze, or he doesn't pass inspection because he's still using other facilities, using the toilets in the house and everything. And all of that, and then there's no water because the renter cut it off. My question, just thinking about it.
Well, in that case, I would think.
Well, the landlord would have civil recourse for damages.
I would think too, if you had a rental and you had somebody in it paying for their own water. I would think that you would could call the water company and say, would you please let me know if that water is turned on? Yes, yeah. And that usually gets it, gets it. No, but.
And what we've done is, we've paid for the water, and then maybe we check the person to court and we go through the eviction process.
I think that's what everybody in every town has to.
When we, when we have rented.
Right.
And that's a good, and that's a good legitimate question, but that's kind of questions that, things we're looking for and in respect of the ordinance. Is it, you know, they don't know what we're doing enough, because it stood up in court without a town, so we already know where to begin with.
The inspections, uh. When?
No, that's a. I lose my train of thought too, but if 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 there was a a way. That we within Westport, that somebody could go to, because we get all kinds of complaints, there's another complaint we get. There'll be some people that rent in certain. Homes out, that they've either fallen through the floor or things are happening to it, they're afraid to say anything to the landlord because. The landlords' response to the tenants have been that we evict them. And usually, they're people that can't go anywhere, so that's that's complaints that we get. Do we get complaints like that privately? Are they gonna complain to the landlord? Not hardly, because they're worried about eviction. Okay, so if if anybody has any answers to cure all these problems, we're willing to sit and listen to it. If if it was easy that the people that own these property, properties would keep them up so that you don't have mild, mildew. Cockroaches, bed bugs, the heating is, works sufficiently, it's not leaking. Uh, they have a stove that works to cook on, that they have a bathroom, facilities that flush. And then they've got the refrigerator that works and and that would have the basic necessities. And that's what we're actually, what we're looking at, we're not looking at saying that the condition of the home has to be a. Taj Mahal, I bet you some people won't know what that is, but this, they have to look like a three hundred thousand dollar house, not hardly. We're talking just about the basic necessities and things.
I understand that, so that, so now this ordinance can determine everybody's quality of life? Because what you'll accept and what I'll accept might be different. I've lived, I've lived in a box before.
So, you're saying.
You can't tell me what I have to accept, and you can't tell anybody else what they can accept. So if you make this law, that it has to be on a certain level.
I'll give you an example. In other words, say, for example, if you don't keep up your property, and because you don't keep up your property. Now I live next door from your cockroaches that bring their property, and then they come over to my property, and I've gotta spend. Fourteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, have an exterminator, I shouldn't complain about that. But you wouldn't want to create a problem.
You're saying we personally have.
No, no, he's just drawing a. Maybe you need to watch how you're receiving it and understand what he's saying.
No, I'm not talking about you personally, I'm just saying.
Usually, you're talking about aesthetics. So, the way somebody's property looks.
Something about bugs.
He said, the way you keep property, uh, all the concerns aren't with bugs.
Just the toilets flushed, we've had people in.
My property, my property wasn't even put up to the sewer, right?
In other words. Let's just kind of keep this focus. The focus being is the basic necessities that a person should be able to have when they come in. And that should be.
We don't have the right as a town to to make that law, do we?
Yes, we do.
How do we? Because that that makes it, so you you're raising up a certain level that some people might not be able to comply with it. Maybe all I can afford is a rundown house that looks like shit, man.
And that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
Yeah, but if you choose to live in it.
Yeah.
Well, I have a right to.
Then then you're gonna live in it. But if you choose to make money off of the back of somebody else and offering it to them, that's a whole different issue. So. So, what you're, what you're telling me is that you would feel it okay that you would allow. Somebody who was in a position. Correct. So, so you would allow to put somebody in a position who needed someplace to live. To take occupancy of a place that didn't have the proper facilities and profit off of that.
Yes, it's all capitalism. And the only thing you require, even to keep your kids, is a bed with sheets. Food for three days and access to water. So does that mean I can't live in a box and keep my kid?
And that's the problem with outside services, their standard is too low.
All right, well, well, that's that's because of the basic minimum of human rights that they figure people should have. Now, what is it all right? As an entity or as a person to say that somebody else can't accept that. And then, as our business model of a country, we've chosen capitalism. So it's my right. To capitalize on anything I can that's legal.
The misery of other people.
That's not necessarily what it means. You're saying that's what it is.
I do have a serious question back to your cockroach thing. Say I have rent, you actually own the home next door, you got cockroaches that comes on to my, uh, into my house. So who's on the hook for the extermination in my house now?
Well, you 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 could have civil recourse to them.
Same way around. If I have a rare have roaches and it comes into somebody actually owns their home. Now who's on the hook for that? Yeah.
So you would only have the recourse to fix cockroach problems before you put somebody else in it?
But, but see, here's my other thing, okay?
We have to fix it regardless, because we have tenants that we take care of.
Yes, and and here's the other thing, okay, well, what if one of your inspectors come in and find an electric issue, okay, who paid that inspect? Is it an outside inspector? That's the only way they can come on to my property.
Well, I mean, I I I mean, if if you refuse, we would just depend on court order in order to allow us to do it.
It wasn't our intent to get into the detail and flip every switch and check everything like that. It's just, it's just, it would be just a basics.
Terry, would they have to check for us then?
Yeah.
Would the water need to be on? Would they have to check the toilet flush, that kind of thing? Living there for, they would have to pay for that water to be turned on. Come into their presence once they take possession.
Well, no, because it'd be prior to possession.
Is this inspection like the water inspection to make sure you don't have any leaks, like the water company does? They charge a fee already for an inspection before they turn your water on?
Not inside the house.
Well, what are the inspections, the meter? No, it's an inspection fee.
There's a super when you sell it out.
What are we gonna do about that? Because I was charged an inspection fee, and so is this gonna be the same old thing that you guys are doing now? Is this, I got records to prove that shit. It said you guys are the town, town board and the water company, right?
Right. But you're responsible from the house, this is getting awkward, this now. You're responsible from the house to the meter. Same thing with the sewer. You're responsible from the house to the.
Make sure that none of the downspouts or or anything else hurts.
We we don't inspect that.
You know, you had to inspect your pipes, your pipes were not hooked to the main sewer line. But my house.
I think I'm lost my car. Let's stop right here and let's go back to, yes, Roy, that's something, let's go back to your place.
Like, let's say he has a house here that he's not got completed. And and he's got barely got a heat in it, no insulation, and he's got his buddy that's homeless, and he wants to know if he can stay there for a hundred dollars a month this winter. Well, he can be helping that guy out, and that'd be a good thing, but we're not, we're saying that house won't qualify for that guy. So we're we're gonna get into a situation where we're gonna be able, we're not gonna, we're gonna put people out of a housing situation.
Can I ask you something, though, on a serious note? Would you buy and live in the house next door to that?
Why?
To the house you just described? Would you buy and live in a house next door to it on a long-term basis? You would?
He's remodeling it, he's not done yet. His buddy wants to know if he can live there for the winter. He's homeless, he's living in his car. I'll pay a hundred dollars a month, that's all I can do. And we're saying, no, 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 Westport won't allow that.
But you would buy and live a house in a house next door to that? You would pay a premium fee.
Would you feel?
I'm saying that you wouldn't live next door to it. You proved my point, so thank you.
Field somewhere.
We're setting a minimum standard that maybe some people can't meet. Because the situation you're talking about is exactly my situation. When I rent, I bought my house last December, I've owned it for less than a year, guys. Take that in mind. That I had a friend, he's on house arrest, he just got out of prison, and I let him live there for a hundred dollars a freaking week. And that's my immediate situation. And it was, I paid his utilities still. And he, so he was basically basically paying me nothing.
Okay, has this tie into this.
Because what he just said, during this, you wouldn't allow that. No, we're not. So why? Because you're trying to tell me no. But tell him he can't have a place to live, because it's the only thing he had.
Okay, and how far do you want to carry this?
That, I mean.
No, no, one person, two people, three people, ten people, fifteen people.
No homeless people or no people who are struggling.
No, I'm serious about this. And we're gonna close off the conversation on this. How how far do you want to carry this, Roy? I didn't, I didn't ask. I didn't ask.
I'll carry it as far as I can.
Yeah, I know you will.
What do you mean by how far do you want to carry it?
No, you say one homeless person, two, three, four.
I would like to invite all the homeless people that need a home to come on in.
Then that goes against our keeping the property values, huh?
Not necessarily.
Yes, it does.
Maybe I'll start a bunch of halfway houses and help everybody get off drugs and stuff. I don't understand.
Oh, you just don't want to go there on this. This is a different discussion.
Right.
So I am, I am curious. About the part that considers the law. And it's inspection. Mobile home parks are set under a different state guideline than regular rental homes are.
So I would look at the definition, lay out the ordinance, which defines renting unit. Um, and rental, um, unit community. I don't know that's, um, that rental unit definition. Um, or rental unit, um, community definition. Um, would. I guess rental unit community could include, um, the, um, trailer units. Means one or more parcels of continuous real property on which are located, one or more structures containing rental units. Um, I suppose not, though, if they're not rental units themselves. They're separate themselves.
Right.
Um, so they may not be, um, included under the current definition for a rental unit.
My only concern, though, is at the bottom of page two. Where you include in section two seven B. That any grounds, facilities, or. Or area of promise for the use of a residential tenant, including the following in number four, is the mobile. And that's, that was my concern.
Yeah, so I I would say that, um, if you were looking at. Um, yeah, two point seven B, any grounds, so we're actually talking about the, instead of the structure, we're actually talking about the real property, the area promised for use. Although whatever you describe is that they're not actually tenants on the property.
They rent the space. Yeah, they are tenants, because they have rules.
Yeah, I I don't I don't know that, um, the current definition, uh, would describe this particular, um, scenario. Uh, if you have, you know, obviously, um, you have, um, residential, but I don't really necessarily have a residential tenancy. Um, at that, on that particular ground facility. Sounds like they own the structure that is on that ground.
I just wanted to share, you know.
Both the command and hook up the sewer and ran sewer all out.
They can't do that. Yeah. We have rules.
Well, state manages mobile home parks in a whole separate code and have a whole different set of requirements than normal rental.
The other thing that I would say along the same lines here is that there's an exemption for reaching inspection if you under five point three, it's like A to C. For units and, um, unit communities that, uh, are inspected by, um.
State agencies.
State agencies, federal agencies, uh, financial institutions, so, um, you know, and I know that you described that the state agency that comes in and affects. Um, so, uh, there are exemptions to that, um, inspection requirement if. In fact, the property is already inspected by a state or federal agency or another sort of, um, inspection.
No, because it's not for residents.
Okay.
So assuming you've got your, uh, the rental unit, uh, definition, if 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 the fact that were the case, which. Yeah, but it may be the, um, fit under the exemption to reaching inspection, because. I did hear you initially, you've been talking about, uh, there's a inspection record that already occurs.
Yeah.
Uh, and so you just need to provide, um, if the rental unit is managed by a professional real estate manager. Uh, we're part of a residential community that is managed by a professional real estate manager. I've seen your hand raised here. Um, and then in the previous twelve months, there's been an inspection performed by, um, you know, um, another federal state. State agency, some state board health, and you can provide, uh, proof of that information, and you may very well provide it with extension. Because perhaps people who are also. Section eight or any rental property that may expect it as well. And that may, that may be also. Correct.
Okay.
So the town will make sure that the seven is one new.
Make sure, make sure all this stuff's signed for me.
It does.
Sir, any other? We we delete this to death on. Something, well, huh?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the line.
No, please, no. Want to hear. And this isn't perfect, and it's still, uh, some of us still work in progress. And that's why we're here to listen. The thing here, we'll close that part of the meeting out and we'll open the. Carl, you you wanted to read what George said. I'm gonna ask you a question. I'm I'm asking a buddy here. Town council's been called, uh, communist, socialist. Have you ever lived in a communist country? How many, how many people here, I'm gonna take a show of hands, how many people here's. Lived in a communist country? How many peoples had a colonel with a CCP colonel say, hey, we're watching you all the time? How many people have almost went, ended up in a Chinese jail and a communist jail? I have. So this, these words banding about what it's like to live in a communist country. And under socialists and stuff like that, apparently, that's just a lot of talk. You don't know what it's like. I did, I've been there, done it. So the thing is, it it goes back to our mission statement as a town council, what we plan to do. Yeah, I read George's and everything that George's proposing and stuff is contrary to what we're trying to do. We're trying to build a town, not tear a town down.
He talks also about fascism and.
The water drainage issue north of, uh, the funeral home. Or east of the funeral home, on the north side of the street, that water drainage issue is speaking on, is that not a valid thing?
Yes, and we're working on that issue.
Pours water right into my house.
Yeah, but that, but the thing is, that's farther on down the line.
What do you mean farther on down the line? You guys are saying I have a shitty house and then your water, your your.
Stop, Carl. What are you here specifically?
You just asked me what my issues were.
No, I asked you why you're here specifically.
I'm here specifically to talk to you guys.
About.
What?
About why I'm being treated like this and everybody's not being treated like this. You know, you haven't sued everybody for four thousand dollars.
Okay, Carl. Discuss that anymore.
Because you can't discuss it because it's a litigation.
It's in litigation.
Litigation.
It's in litigation, you should know that. Outside of a courtroom, we can discuss it.
Sue me for a traffic ticket, like, it's not even a real court case. I was at the clerk's office today, man.
For a traffic ticket?
And I tried to file back one of you guys, and it's not a real court case, because you guys are pulling bullshit. It's a real court case, but I can't file against you in small claims. Because you you did some funny business.
Carl, we, this, this is a dead issue here. It's in litigation.
I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna stop now.
Okay, go ahead. Please.
Please, I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Westport Sonic Lodge, you've probably seen our new building and making a very good headway, hopefully by the end of December will be moved in. Our old building's for sale. First place we stopped, over the city of Westport, I'd like to buy. Do something with it, knock it down, maybe, uh, extend the parking lot right there next to us, whatever, but that's why we're here.
That, that, I guess that would, damn, what you want to sell it, what's the price?
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Thirty days, anything left after thirty days belongs to, uh, down Westport. As is. Right there on the side. What you see is what you get. We'll move anything we need to move out within thirty days, and that's your price check.
First of all, I want to tell you, first of all, I want to tell you that your building looks really nice. Uh, I'm concerned about maybe the water coming up. Did you get that took care of? Okay.
Around there, I'm pretty good.
Okay.
Uh, the real issue with that is the state right away.
Right.
And the road ditch, all along there is, it does not rain.
Right.
And it that's what's back at that, right there in the corner.
We're trying to get, um, some help here to get a study done on our water.
State of Indiana would come out there like they did thirty years ago.
Clean them out.
Forty-six. Down there.
Well, and and if if the town does not buy this, I would suggest that you go and talk to Mrs. Loudon. Uh, she might get, find somebody to buy that for you. Yeah, of course you do.
Yeah, if, what we do will coordinate with Damon Land, and he's our public work superintendent, and Damon left.
He stepped out.
Oh, he stepped out and have him look at it. And it's something, I'm, we're not gonna say no, but we're needing to take a look at it.
Sure.
I have a question about the legality of having somebody in charge of some of these things. Damon Land is, uh, he works. But he also. Enforcer of your town ordinance is Andy, your town superintendent?
As far as any other issues with that, or.
Because you don't understand how the ordinance.
Because I don't understand how we're writing it to make it.
Oh, we're done with you, Carl. We're just, Carl, we're just gonna. Just going in a circle. I kind of like to stop that circle. We've had it now an hour and a half, and still haven't gotten any conclusions on anything, so.
So I just want to. Put a couple things up. Agencies were brought up as one of the main things that that we've already got them in place. A lot of those.
You guys can, you guys can go if you want.
A lot of those agencies have come back to us.
Thanks for coming, I know.
Sorry. Thank you.
Did a few of those agencies have come back to us and told us that that's something that we need to address ourselves?
Yes.
Or out of your. So. No, because it's outside of their spectrum. Um. So rental versus occupied, there are two different reasons, obviously, that we're looking at that. Um, because the rental is a for-profit, okay? We wanted to try and get along with everybody kind of policing themselves, and we've already got some of those ordinance in place. For that to occur. And we've sent some remedies for action out to people with no response. Some continued remedies for a response. Carl here, for example. With no response to it.
That's not true. I responded. I came in here and asked if I was cleaned up, and I was told it was okay. And now you said I was in constant violation since that time. That's not true. You have to file a new, send a new certified letter to start action again.
So. Things in place in order.
Because whether it's true or not, this.
But you're saying that it was unanswered, and that's why you're making an order. That's not true.
We're talking.
You're lying to people for passing the orders.
Yes, please do.
And I don't know if we've closed public comment yet on the, um, ordinance, but, um, if.
Now'd be a good time.
Well, I I don't know if the, if the, um, council is wanting to entertain. Um, I think at this point, maybe everybody's had an opportunity to speak. The council could certainly allow. Others to speak again if it so chooses. However, the council can also close the, um. This particular item to public comment and allow council members, um, to give their thoughts before entertaining a motion if there's going to be one made.
So I will close this public comment right now. Phase of it, and then the town council, Joyce or John. Time to voice their opinion and respond to the issues.
I for one appreciate it when we send a notice out to somebody and they come in and they try their darndest to comply. Like Richard, I mean, he's been working on his. That's all we're wanting, is to see people come forward instead of. Just ignoring whatever you're asking them to do. That's, that's silly. I mean, come in, show us what we're, I mean, we've allowed that, we've allowed people to go ahead and. Control their own stuff. But you have a problem. You have a problem in your neighborhood of people who are, cannot leave you alone.
I know.
Well, don't come to us because we have told them. We have called, we have told them to just.
Free to acknowledge it. I, neighbors that are doing something.
You had some good neighbors.
She also said that she doesn't take a, uh, notice to any, if anybody's done anything, and just keeps charging you like a robot. So.
Come in and say, I did this.
Yes, this, because this issue is, this issue's under litigation. You understand that? Understand litigation, we can not discuss this in an open forum.
Also here, I'd like to add that I am responsible for collecting fees for the town as the clerk treasurer. I am not responsible for lifting any fees or telling you when your property is clean, so that is something you would take up with the council, not the clerk treasurer.
Yeah, she doesn't have anything to do with it. You've got to understand with the town employees, they just follow the instructions. And and follow the ordinance and everything of the town council, so. So, so complaining to her is highly unfair because she doesn't have anything to do. She does not make a final decision. Carl, you, in, in, you know, this is under litigation and you didn't accord enough that you ought to know certain things by now. So part of that is that you can discuss things that are being litigated in a public forum like this. So with us, it's the end of the conversation.
I only wanted to make sure that's true.
Well, you'll. You'll get in the forum and find out.
Well, nobody will pick my case because it's not a regular court case. You guys are filing an ordinance violation. Four thousand dollars.
That's not our problem.
It's your choice. I'm not in violation.
It's in litigation. This is not a place to discuss.
I'll discuss it with everybody else.
That's fine.
And then so you could select the next time.
I've been threatened before.
I didn't threaten you. I said I'm gonna run for office.
See, right there, that proves to me that you, that you don't listen very well. I didn't say that you did. No, I didn't.
Can I just get a call order? I'm not gonna deal with this any longer.
No.
So in regards to the agencies that were brought up. They've informed us that it's our responsibility to take care of these things, not theirs. On more than one occasion. So it's left us no other recourse. But to look at some other way in order to get it done. I don't understand. For people who maintain their properties. And who rent over extended periods of time. By registering the. The property, the owner of the property and the tenant. And the twenty-five dollar fee for the initial rental, if it's over a long period of time, why it becomes such an issue? For people that understand that. Functional water, heat, sewage and everything else is necessary when you rent the building. I don't understand why it's an issue. I'm not telling you that. You gotta have five H drywall versus paneling in the house and telling you what kind of carpet it's gotta have. I don't know that we've developed a checklist. Or, or has one been attached?
There's a, so we gotta know what we gotta meet, right? Yeah, the, um, ordinance directs the, uh, public work superintendent to create, uh, forums. Uh, that would be used to implement the ordinance.
Okay. So. He is. So.
You guys just said he wasn't allowed to do it.
I did not say that. That was nothing that I said. So.
We didn't say that he was going to do the inspection.
It said that it was him or his designate.
Right.
I had no idea.
You're reaching, honey.
We didn't say that he was gonna do the. Yeah, yeah.
So. So. What I just want people to understand is that we've been told that it's our, our thing to deal with. The state agencies have turned on us and said, that's for you to deal with, not for us. Okay, we still have people in the community that come to us and ask for remedy consistently, okay? We need to listen to them just as much as we listen to you. Okay, now. We need to find some way in order to get something in place. One way or another. We've attempted through different ordinances and remedies. We've had good response on some, no response on others. We've been brought into litigation on six. Is it six? So we've probably got what, uh, fifty-fifty success rate, I think, with, with what we sent out? Is that about, would you say that's about right?
Uh, what do you mean?
In, in, in remedy for, for, for ordinance violations.
Well, we've sent out almost a hundred letters.
Okay.
So I would say it's more like. Ninety-four percent success rate?
But we still get complaints and we still have people coming to us asking us what we're gonna do about it consistently and repeatedly. It's not a one-time thing. Okay, it, I wouldn't have taken the time in order to do this if it was one person that was having a complaint, okay? It took me almost three months. To put things together from different agencies and, and, or different towns and cities that have these types of ordinances in place. To whittle it down to about the basic components. That I could give so that there wasn't definitive. There, there are places that name the size of the pipe and everything else and, and the whole nine yards. I tried to limit it to the basic functions. Of what was being read, okay? So. As opposed to everybody having complaints about it. Can we have some ideas to maybe pinpoint and improve on what we have? So that we can get to the end. And still satisfy what we're looking for. So I would agree before that, yeah, I, I think that's something that we missed. And, um, there, there, there's two things that come up. Number one, I think we need to define. The mobile home park more and, and I, and I think it's in there loosely, but I think it needs to be a tighter definition. Because that's covered under a different code and, and they're monitored by the state.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we discussed that a little bit. I do think that really you, I don't know that that necessarily needs to be changed. I think that it, it does actually include the scenario that they described where. Um, the grounds, um, you know, it's used for residential tenancy and that's described in the room. So I think that that definition does apply to their situation, but they probably are in it to document it with the murder. Um, under the, uh, five point three because they do have, so the property is managed professionally, um, and. Um, there, there's an inspection that's performed annually by the state or state agency. Obviously, they would need to provide credentials for, um, the manager, they provide information showing there is an inspection. Um, and they would need to make sure that they, um, prove they're under the exemption, but I think that it is a written, I think that definition does apply to them, um, and.
And I think it describes that documents have to be provided in the, in the exclusion clause.
Yes.
The other thing that I want to say is that I'm most surprised. That people that take care of their properties are the ones that have the biggest complaints. I really thought it was gonna be the reverse. Because they have the most at stake when it costs, comes to the cost of getting those properties up to snuff.
It's just too much government.
You know? So.
Brad, I'm sorry, public comments over.
Brad missed it and, and, and I'm sorry, you missed it, Brad, but we had public comment earlier, yeah.
I really do, Harry. I wish I was here.
So.
I'd like to have heard of all. The feed went bad and I got a phone call and they were like, hey, you wouldn't believe what's going down. You know, the people are in this room right here. They do care. They do care about this town.
Including us.
Including me. And I feel as if you guys are punishing Roy Salem and everybody else that's in here. What about section eight? What about government housing? What about the military that's in mind that are inspected annually?
Those are, it, it, those are in the clause that are covered by state agencies, inspections.
Gonna come down to the point that Aunt Burn, we find out has a water pipe that's out there and. Are we gonna go in and start fixing this stuff for everybody? Don't renters have a choice to move into a property? Even unfit, do the proper things and exit. Doesn't the people of the United States have the choice where they live? And if it doesn't meet their standards, there are clauses for renters that if it is not up to snuff, they can leave.
The thing is. And I'm gonna explain it. The people that live adjacent to those homes. Have continued problems and it affects their quality of life as well.
And the property owners, the property owners have rights that renters don't have.
So.
That we've had your chance to speak.
What I would like. Is I think there's an understanding of what we're trying to figure out here, okay? There are property owners that are concerned that their property values. Aren't being appropriately attended to by the council by allowing some of the dilapidated rentals to continue. Okay, now, does that take into consideration? The people that have come here in order to represent themselves? No. Do the people that this ordinance covers. Uh, have they attended? No. Okay. Bring forward some ideas to try and help us understand what we can do because, because I'm gonna tell you, the government agencies aren't there for us. They're not. So when we tried to recruit IDEM. Okay, to take care of the open sewer that, that Walter came in and has complained about repeatedly and has had to smell all summer. And we have no remedy or recourse other than maybe some type of ordinance like this. That's what we look at.
Do you think you could ever overreach? And I'm not being a smarto.
Well, and, 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 and I've tried to explain.
And then let's take, I'm gonna pick on Roy Salem for a moment. Roy, I don't think you're a dick, but I'm gonna call your pick right now. What if somebody on the board dislikes Roy?
It would be impossible.
But this, in my opinion, this is only my opinion, would become a foothold. That could try to run a landlord out of business. What happens if, honestly, think about it. You, you three are off the board, they come in. Roy ran over a dog, they're pissed, it goes all the way back to the back. He can come in and somebody can say, your house isn't up and snuff, because they put a carpet wall into it.
But that could go, that, that could go into place for our nuisance ordinance. I, I mean, there are. Other, other ordinances that, that, that can go into place there. But how, how do we balance the concerns of our property owners, let me next to the, the, next to it, okay? And it's like Roy said, we, we've got good intentions. Come back. With some ideas.
I wish we could.
Get us to this point.
That we could have an ordinance that the town would support us when somebody comes in and doesn't pay the rent. Our buildings we pay. Somebody who doesn't pay the rent who comes in and destroys the property on the inside. And then our recourse.
It's, it's civil liability that, that you would go through, yeah.
But it's that vicious cycle and I think that is a legitimate fear. I love this town. I have no problem with the four of you sitting up there at all.
We love you too.
But here's the bottom line is overreach. It's a tax. It's twenty-five dollars. Twenty-five dollars is gonna hurt a single person in here. Was it gonna go fifty? I have to pay for mine. You know, government comes in and they do it for free. They come in and they do it for free.
Maybe that's options that, that can be looked at.
Has anybody made a statement that nobody's gonna get on their property? Can somebody legally come onto somebody else's property? And do an inspection legally? Without permission of the landlord.
Without permission, we would need to obtain a quote.
You'd have to get a court order. And that's my, that's my question. Is this gonna become something that becomes that huge thing? I'd love to see Westport grow. You know that? Everybody on this board up here knows that. You know, I get fed up and tired. Westport is a drug town. It's a piece of shit. Who would live here? Really? I invest here and I like our town.
And Brad, that's, and we've heard that too. That's, let's look at the reality of things. I don't think you really understand a, a lot of what's going on. The system now is getting overloaded. The health department people, prosecutor's office, the courts, the jails, the prisons. Or we've reached a point of saturation on things and they wanna hide and, and. You, you, you pick up your newspaper like San Francisco, the latest thing today, you know what I read? The newspaper come out and said, well, maybe the citizens need to get used to a little bit of rock rigging once in a while. It's a way of life. That's just what they said. This, this is what we're descending down into because the whole system is overloaded. I understand that. So like, and this is my soapbox, like John was saying. We, we've looked around at different things and it's more or less that we've got fingers pointing back at us saying, if you want some of this stuff done, you better do it in-house. And that's what we're attempting to do. So, so I come up with the conclusion, okay. If this is the reality in the world that I live in and this is the way it's going to be and this is what I see. Then Westport's gonna do the best that they can to take care of the people, the health, safety, welfare, the people within this town. Is this a perfect ordinance? No, that's why we're getting input now. Do we need guidelines and, uh, like, uh. Roy said, a checklist of things so we have clear and all of that and maybe no fee and all that. Yeah, that's a possibility. We're not passing this tonight. This is public input. But I'm here to tell you that we're gonna do something to help the safety and the welfare of the people that live in town. And we're gonna know, have people that live out of town. Hey, yeah, you come into town, you got clean rentals. You got a good place to stay. The people there take care of you. That's, that's the goal we're working for. And Brad, we looked at this stuff. We looked at the population and the whole thing and we're going, we're going back downhill, back a little any other way. So we need to reverse some things. This was, this was part of it. You look at the census and, and the figures and some of the other things. The school is worried about losing students out there. So they're gonna have to redo things. So somehow we gotta, we gotta redo everything.
Quick question.
Yes.
I really miss, I really apologize for not being there.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Number one, I don't wanna see this board. I don't wanna see this. We have a good board. My opinion, we have a good board. I don't wanna see this turn into a vicious town fight.
It's not.
Here's my second, here's my big thing. If, if you guys came up with an ordinance that you can present. And we can have something that was back.
Right.
That says, hey, by the way, Harry, I got a rental property at such and such an address. This is in, this is the problem that I'm having with it.
Right.
Everything's up to snuff. Well, right here in my lease, Harry, it says, uh, you're not allowed to have a dog on property.
And people have had.
And they tell me go kiss my rear end. And then we got trash out here. I've got, my car got removed. It didn't belong to me and I didn't come down here and scream and yell, but I had to refund the money back on the Bronco Two that you guys personally had expelled. It didn't belong to me. And I did leave a message that that vehicle didn't belong, but my Bronco Two was removed. That bothered me. My child came home. From the hospital in that truck. Now, what did I do and what was there hurting it setting there? The vehicle was sold. The young man at bottoms in the military couldn't get a hold of it. Where do I take it to? I come home, truck's gone. Got that cute little paper in the phone. And really cool, the board could call and say, hey, Brad. You got ditched out because your truck's there. When something's on your property, we're more concerned with. The neighbor, why couldn't we come up with something? Pretty simple. Why say, hey, Harry? I got a rider violation pointed it out to me, um. What can we do as town board to make sure they clean their stuff up? And we, you guys would work with us. We work with you and it doesn't become a vicious battle.
Problem is, in those situations, we can't override state law, I don't believe, correct? On those rental issues. As far as if his lease says they can't have dogs and they do those types of things.
Complaint. The neighbor's bitchin'. If the neighbor's complaining, you call them. It's like, uh, no, dogs aren't allowed on this property. But I can't get him to get rid of the dog. There's all kinds of things. If you were asked the first solution, I'm just throwing some stuff out there. To be honest with you, I feel like I'm the bad guy. And I have never, and, but Joyce, it's how I feel. I feel like that's where it's coming, but the bottom line is if we had something that was really nice. That if you guys had a problem with it, that we could even point it out to the tenants that was in there, that they have to agree to it. But twenty-five bucks isn't the issue. You know, is, my biggest fear is.
In, 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 in what you missed. In, 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 in what you missed is that we've tried recourse through other ways and have gotten nowhere. So speaking with, with the lawyer, we needed to find a way so that we had valid recourse. In a court area, okay? We can't just, um, without the ordinance. We can't file a case. For the remedy. I think everybody now, after the discussion. Understands and, and, and Roy agreed of where we're trying to get to. Everybody has a position on whether or not it's overreach or, or whatever, and I think that's a fairly consistent thing. We've tried one way and it hasn't worked repeatedly over a long period of time and we still have residents coming to us complaining, asking for action, okay? Just like anybody else, I mean, we need to address their issues. The unfortunate side for us is that the people that come to us and request action aren't here in support of what we're doing in the name of what they request. There are some issues with the ordinance to where I'm not going to ask for a motion for it at this point because I think we've got some gaps in it that we need to remedy before we go forward with it. We're missing a checklist that's added in there along with a couple of other things that we didn't come up with. But how about the people that understand where we're coming from and what we're trying to achieve? Come back with some ideas so that we can pinpoint, consolidate it, not make it as broad maybe, so that we can get the remedy we're looking for, for the complaints that we're getting and maybe solve the problem for both the landlord and the property owners around the houses.
We had suggestions, have changes, is there a place we can send that?
It did, well.
Yeah, you can send it to the town hall website.
Yeah, or bring it to the next forum.
Here was one of my big concerns, I lost my Bronco two that means a lot to me. That Debbie was pretty upset. Okay? Where you go, I went to the tow. Went to the tow, you want to pay six hundred dollars for something you already own? Want to pay six hundred dollars for something that you already own?
Yeah, you guys are down, yeah, please.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, were you guys waiting here all this time to say something? You don't have to be a part of this.
Which is a separate topic.
There are a lot, there are a lot that have already been, along with that, that have been removed, so it's not an isolated incident.
We got to sign all this stuff.
But we've got some other business we need to care and we've closed that, but we appreciate it. I see where you're coming.
Has there been a formal action taken on this particular ordinance? I know this is the second reading, it can be your motion to approve or it can be a motion table.
Yeah, I make a motion to table if there's some things that we still need to work on.
And let's, let's, Brad, we get a bunch of other stuff.
Brad, I'm sorry I couldn't come here and send her. And there's things that we still need to work on, it's a work in progress and we need input from people, it's not, it's not a done deal.
Look, I think everybody understands the end of the means, maybe.
This was, this was something that was brought up. It's not lying. The house is brought up, it's not. You brought in. Do I say? I've seen this happen. I've seen this happen at a Florida community where property is also being held. Where people imported violent, nasty people just to spite the neighbors. Everything in the house is perfect. But we're not going to be able, this is America, you can't say that this offender cannot be in this home. So that's where I was saying, the big wild, you make enough people that are trying to do the right things and do the right things, they can bring in a lot of bad people. I don't want to see bad people.
Well, I think what we're seeing is we've got people trying to do the right thing, with people trying to do the right thing. So can we find the common ground and understand where we're at? Maybe give some suggestions on what going, and I appreciate it.
Last thing. You know, Greensboro has just some aggressive things now, trying to grow their town, paying for people to transfer in, all kinds of stuff. I would just like to see us focus more on trying to increase homeownership and our population here. And I think I suggested before something about any house that was turned into, from a rental into a residence for someone, maybe we give them free water for a year, their bill would reflect how much their water was, there's not charged for the charge of the sewer for the whole year, something like that. And the other thing is, right now, our ordinance allows us to charge somebody for two months' water bill if it's on for two days only, if it's red on the first day and billed the second day. So basically, they have it on for a week, they can get two full months' bills, one for four days, one for three days. I think we need to immediately change that ordinance that anything, ten days or more be prorated. Anything under ten days would just be attached to the previous bill or the next one or two. Because we're discouraging business and we're discouraging homeownership and we don't want either one of those anymore. And we'd like to change that ASAP, whatever we take, change that ordinance or change that billing manner to do it right now or just write a pretty good. I mean, it doesn't seem reasonable, charge somebody for two months for two days, right? But that is what the ordinance technically allows, that's why it's set up now, technically allows it. If we had turned on today and it was red today, or even like I said, even just one week, charge for two.
And we spoke to a rent, a rate consultant and you're not paying for the water, you're paying for the fact that the water's available to the unit. Whether that's for a day, thirty days or whatever. So you're paying for the availability of the water and the infrastructure and that minimum fee. So even if that carries over a billing period, then it's still the availability of water, of being there for that period of time.
But only for the time of day.
And that's why there's a minimum fee and that you don't exceed that.
I'm saying, say my bill was red on Friday and then on Monday I call and have turned off, I'm going to get a second bill for three days.
Correct.
That would one stop.
Well, our rate consultant.
We don't care about the rate consultant, we, people want that change.
Well, we do care about the rate consultant because we have to follow what they give us because otherwise we can't get grants.
Get a hold of them, whatever it takes, but we want that change to be, because we're discouraging businesses and we're discouraging homeownership, we've got to stop those two things. The guy who's here to have the fireworks thing, how many months was he charged for? And he was there like eighty some days, he was charged for four or five months. We don't want to do that, we don't want to do that. Does anybody here want to charge a guy for five months when he's here for eighty-nine days? No, none of us. Please take the steps to change that.
We can't because we'd violate our grant ordinances.
That money, that minimum fee of, say fifty-nine dollars or what have you, the rate consultant explains is getting that money to your property, so that's paying the cost of the treatment plant, that's paying those chemicals, that's paying for, absolutely, because it's per month.
No other town does it.
And they're going to be a product producer of rate consultants, discussion.
Yeah, it's produced for the grant funding every time, every time we get.
And so it may be that this discussion will be more productive when there's an agenda item in front of the board that can be considered. I don't know when the rate.
Next rate consultant.
It's usually every two to three years, it was done in two thousand eighteen.
We have a new one for the wastewater thing right now.
We had a new one. Well, that's wastewater, that's not water. I have some adjustments that we skipped over and that I need to finish up, really, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're going this far.
The business association has more Christmas decorations than what they have poles to hang.
Right.
And you'd like to add a few more poles here in town.
Right.
Get to wire them up where we could put, so if I could have your permission, I'll contact you from the county town, we'll find out what it's going to cost.
How do we, yeah, permission, we need an informal resolution or approval or?
Yeah, but at this point, it's just checking costs.
Check costs.
Check costs, yeah.
There's a formal agenda item, so I would say that if there's something that comes to that, it would become an agenda, it could be something that can be a point of discussion.
Yeah, they say, well, yeah, go ahead.
Take a look at it and bring it back.
I just want to make sure at this point, that we're still within the legalities.
You skipped over adjustment items, I want to get that done really quick because this is for the benefit of the citizens. We have three adjustment letters that came through.
Thanks, Brian, for being patient with us and standing.
The first. Thank you.
Brad, we got a minute.
I'm sorry. The reason these adjustments were being presented to the council is because it goes over the one month. This particular family, Jennifer Creach, had an adjustment that went from August. And her July bill had went up and then it went into August and then it went into September. Just briefly looking through that and if we adjust her bill, we're giving her a credit of fifteen hundred dollars and fifty-four cents. So I need permission to whether you want to make that adjustment or not.
What was the result, what was the causes, I mean, that's a lot of water.
You want to read the one?
Request an adjustment to the water bill due to a major leak that was noticed at the beginning of August. Their water bill for July was more than double our normal amount, we contacted for July, or Westport Water Utility, they sent someone out to verify the leak was not on their end, it was determined the leak was on our end. We began contacting plumbers for repairs, we had four different plumbers assess the damage. State they would return, but never returned nor returned phone calls, additional plumbers were contacted, with no luck, we were then baked strong with other jobs, we finally found a plumber, Matt Lock Plumbing, on nine fifteen, he stated he could complete the work of nine at the week of nine twenty. Water line replacement was fully completed on nine twenty-four. New water line was installed from the water meter at the road to our shut-off valve in the house. The old leaking pipe is no longer in use.
And on the last page, it shows you the credit, we were given a pretty considerable credit on that one.
Right, yeah, that's considerable. She wants a second adjustment due to the severity of the leak that they had, they couldn't have that. Couldn't get a plumber and so forth and so on. So, yeah, I make the motion, they came and they were really nice about it and asked for our help and my God, I couldn't pay that water bill for that.
Okay, the next one was, we had a water leak and our bill was adjusted with the leak that ended the second monthly bill. We had a really bad toilet leak, reached out and asked for a second adjustment. It would be so much appreciated, we have five children and it would be very hard for us to pay, thank you, Daniel and Carly Hamer, and their credit is a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And did that cross over, were the two bills, I'm making a motion?
Second.
Yes.
On favor.
And most of these folks haven't been here before, had a problem before.
Correct, yeah. And then the next one, to whom it may concern, I'm requesting my water and sewer bill for the last three months be adjusted. I watered my dog, turned the water off at the end of the hose and forgot to turn it off at the spigot. In the meantime, the hose sprung a leak and ran for some time before I was called about a water leak. I promptly looked for a leak and discovered the hose and shut it off at the spigot. No sewer would have been used as a result of that break. Then while I was gone one day, my dog decided to look out the window over the kitchen sink, he turned on the faucet. I'm not sure how long the water had been running before I got home. I have removed the knobs on the faucet, so he cannot do that again. If that wasn't enough, when I got the next water bill, I realized I must have a leak somewhere, so I started looking in the flapper, my toilet was not operating properly. I've replaced the flapper, I have since checked the meter a couple of times to make sure I have no more leaks. Please consider adjusting my water and sewer bill accordingly for the last three months. Sincerely, Thomas Kedrowitz from two oh eight North State Road three. His adjustment for the first month would be a credit of one fifty-one thirteen. The next month would be thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents and then the third month is a credit of eighty-three sixty-five.
How long has he been the customer?
He's been a very long customer currently, the Matthews Church is paying his water bill because he has an arrangement with them because he's not able to maintain his own water bill.
Was that above what his normal stuff was?
The adjustments are, yeah, Jenny takes an average and the credit is like above.
So there's definitely something that was different from what his normal bill was.
Yeah. And I think it's really a credit for the church since they're paying that.
Make the motion of second. Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we close this week.
Oh, we still got a side.